Sitka School Board acknowledges that our schools are located on the ancestral homelands of the Hlinget people who have lived in Shitka since time immemorial. We express our deepest respect and gratitude for our indigenous neighbors, the Hlinget, for their enduring care and protection of Hlinget ani. Moving on, can we do a roll call, please?
Blossom Teal Olson. Todd Gebler.
President.
Paul Ryu.
President.
Andrew Haynes.
Here. All right, item five, approval of the proposed agenda and consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
Moved to approve the consent agenda and...
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda and proposed agenda as presented. Any public comment to the motion? Any board comment? Seeing none. Uh, any opposed to approving the agenda and consent agenda as presented? Do we need to do a roll call? Okay, let's do a roll call. Sorry, thank you.
Blossom Teal Olson. Yes. Todd Gebler.
Yes.
Paul Ryu.
Yes.
Andrew Haynes.
Yes. All right, moving on to item six, special reports, government to government. Do we have any representatives here this evening to present?
I'm just gonna report a little bit on the Sitka Native education program for the tribe. So, we at SNEP had our first culmination since 2019. It went really well, nice and quick and short, but much appreciated by families. That was at the Centennial Hall and we had great attendance and everything went smoothly. So, it was a good kind of dipping our toe back in the water. We have cultural family activities now that are also advertised on the tribe website, as well as the Facebook page that's open for registration. We had our first one recently and we went out to an island on an island marine and gathered Devil's Club and spruce tips and the families in a month will process all that together and the products that are created, every family gets to take one thing home and the rest are donated to the tribe to be distributed amongst the elders. That's been a lot of fun and that's in collaboration with the Creed Department, my department, and the Social Services Department. We also have a full schedule for camps this summer, six camps, three geared towards the elementary age and three geared towards the high school, middle school, high school ages. We have some rooms still in our sixth through 12th grade camps. We also have open registration until probably late this week, so if there's any students on your guys' radar that you wanna plug the camps to, you're welcome to do that. The registration is also available on the STA Facebook page and the website. We are bringing sixth through 12th graders to Celebration for the first time since 2010. So, chaperones are preparing themselves for traveling with middle school, high schoolers and the middle school, high schoolers have been practicing documentation because our, a lot of our leaders for that group are unable to travel. So, instead of going and performing at all the things, we're going and we're participating in the parade and the entrance and the exit and then the rest of the time we're documenting really well what's happening at Celebration so that our younger students have an idea of what that is rather than just talking about Celebration, which is kind of a broad concept. People are often like, "What are you celebrating?", which is a big question also. So, we are working on that. We'll be leaving Tuesday with that group of students. And then if you haven't heard, the Young Professionals Employment Program is open this summer. Now, Yehl Alec Duncan is finalizing job descriptions for that. It's mostly in-house, as in we're gonna have students placed within various departments at STA this year with a few exceptions and then we'll see how that goes and kind of broaden that to partners next summer. That's all I've got. Any questions for tribe update?
I'm just excited to hear that young people are going to Celebration and that Celebration is happening.
Yes, we're very excited.
And I had the pleasure of seeing so many happy pictures of families going out on such a beautiful day, taking part in cultural activities and having those young minds learn those traditional values and knowledge. And so, thank you very much for your time and I know that, you know, I saw Jean Swanson there and also Claro Haller and Hill.
Yeah.
You know, you guys have a great team and it's just great to see the younger generation pick up and learn from people that can pass down the knowledge. So, again, thank you so much. I hope that, you know, all the programs that you've discussed tonight are accessible via, as I'm pretty sure they will be, on social media and I'm looking forward to seeing those outcomes.
Yeah.
But thank you so much.
Of course, gonna tease.
Um, thank you for being here and Celebration is in Juneau, is that right?
Yes, Juneau. And this is, they had scheduled it for every even year, the 2021 was postponed until 2021, which was officially canceled, so this is the first summer back and they're requiring vaccinations and masks as well, so.
All right.
Another kind of dipping the toe back in the water, usually there's 50 dance groups, this year there's 30.
Awesome.
So, it's a smaller pool, but everyone's still very excited.
Great, I hope it's amazing.
Thank you.
And I had one other question about the camps that you talked about.
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, how many, what's the maximum enrollment for that? What are you hoping for?
Um, it depends on the week. There's, I think, the largest week that we have most staff capacity. We have 25 students registered and we're having a meeting tomorrow to figure out, can we make this happen? We don't wanna turn anyone away.
Yeah.
So, that's the goal. We gotta make it happen.
And are they like week-long camps?
Yeah, week-long camps, noon to 4:30 generally, there's a few exceptions, but yeah, we aim for Monday through Thursday and noon to 4:30 and then the Friday is generally a family culmination day where we invite families to come in and the students share what they learned that week.
Excellent.
Sometimes those are tied with the cultural family activities in collaboration with Social Services.
All right.
Yeah.
Best wishes.
Thank you.
Glad, great to see that stuff coming back around. So, thanks for being here, the Christians.
Yeah, of course.
Any other government to government?
Rebecca Himshut with the Sitka Assembly here, listening. Congratulations on making it through the school year, welcome to summer. I'll be very curious about item 12F tonight and whether you guys, if you don't come up with something that you're going to take to the Assembly, then I might for once actually at the Assembly, report on what I've heard here tonight. So, up to you how you handle that, but that's an item that I'm gonna be paying especially close attention to. Thanks.
Great, we're glad you're here for that, so thank you. Any other government to government? I think that's our usual. Um, okay, so thank you for those reports. Item seven, recognitions honoring retired teachers. We did a brief, a brief bit about that at the very beginning. We're focusing on Phil Burdick, Mike Kernine, and Laura Rogers. Did you have anything else you wanted to add in?
I think we need to bring Phil back up again, so it's on Zoom and recorded for posterity. So, Phil, would you please come back up again? So, Phil Burdick, Mike Kernine was here earlier, was not able to be here, but take this opportunity to recognize Phil Burdick for his time in the Sitka School District. So, how about, did you wanna say a few words?
Yeah, speech.
I guess.
Yeah. Um, I wanna say that I think your very first year here was my sophomore year of English in Miss Woolsey's class and you were, were you helping student teaching? What were you? Yeah, all right. So, Mr. Burdick, I got to be there at the very beginning as a high school student all those years ago. So, it's been, I mean, you're just such a staple in this district, you're going to be sorely missed and thank you for the, think about the years and the thousands of students you've positively impacted and not to mention your work at Pacific High School and building that school into the amazing entity that it is today. So, we just wanna, just with so much gratitude, thank you for making Sitka a better place in our district, so thank you.
On the floor about Phil. Um, it's quite interesting 'cause I think Andrew and I were both in that realm of, you know, finishing out high school while Phil was getting his feet wet within the Sitka School District. So, I had another perspective. I was attending Mount Edgecombe High School. I had flown in from my hometown of Cotsby, Alaska. I had the great fortune of living around the state, so Sitka wasn't really quite a big surprise to me. But as Phil brought up, at the Pacific High School graduation, the early beginnings of Pacific High and how they started out at the Ivy Hall, which was literally at the time an Ivy Hall. And so, I remember being a student and going to a school that didn't quite fit who I was and so, every single time I saw your students be who they are and every time, you know, I walked past having to do my thing, you know, 'cause no shade to Mount Edgecombe, they had their, you know, they have their fine history of producing leaders within the state and, but I always looked over and saw students that I identified with being supported and I felt, I was just like, "I am in the wrong school." And so, you know, and after all that time, you know, I'm seeing how Pacific High has grown into what it is and how it is being run and how it has continually brought forth a wonderful form of education for our students within the district who may find a different path or have a different heartbeat or whatever they want to, you know, learn. I really, really appreciate how you've made that happen. You really helped the birth of Pacific High and what it is today. So, thank you very much for your time and all of your hard work. So, thank you, Phil.
(inaudible) Um... (inaudible) So... (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Okay, thank you for that. Item eight, persons to be heard. Persons to be heard is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board about a topic that is not on the agenda. As these are not agenda items, no board deliberation or action will occur in response. Questions for clarification may be posed by board members. The board may choose to refer items to the superintendent or designee for further action. Standard time limit for comments will be three minutes unless otherwise stated by the board president with consent of the board. A timer is used and a sound will indicate when time expires. All comments must be respectful and charges or complaints against specific employees are not permitted. Members of the public are referred to Board Policies 1312, 1312.1, 1312.2, 1312.3 and associated administrative regulations, as well as to Board Bylaw 9323A for information about how to lodge complaints. Speakers are also asked to please state their full name for the record prior to speaking. We have any persons to be heard this evening.
I'm Mike Vera, currently serving as the President of the Sitka Education Association and on behalf of their colleagues, I wanted to just say a couple things too and offer our congratulations and thank you to both Phil and Sarah and Mike Kernine. And I've said these things to them already, but I'll just echo it for the public. I told Mike that I think there's a special place in heaven for middle school music teachers. Andrew and I both had the fortune of having a legendary music teacher in middle school, Jeannie Packer, who I think changed our lives forever and I blame her. I hold her 50% responsible for the fact that I'm a teacher now and whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, I'm not sure, but I hold her responsible because of the impact that she had on me from sixth to eighth grade when I had no idea who I was and she saw something in me. This community's been so fortunate to go from her with the years between and then to have another legendary music teacher that lasted a full career at the middle school and I just feel lucky that I got to spend a few years at the end with Mike as his colleague at the high school. So, super appreciative for his dedication to kids in Sitka. And Phil and Sarah both together, their commitment to Pacific High School, I mean, I told Phil the other day, this thing exists only because of your passion and commitment and dedication and, you know, the opportunity for kids in Sitka to have an alternative way to learn and to finish high school and to get kids to the finish line is a testimony to their passion for that alternative learning. I was a junior in high school and Phil was student teaching and had the chance to have him as kind of an independent study English teacher my junior year and really enjoyed getting to know him. And through the course of my career in the district, Phil and I often think about education differently, sometimes in a passionate way and I've always appreciated, Phil, the opportunity to speak to you and I think we can speak passionately and disagree and still remain respectful of each other and I have nothing but the deepest respect for your commitment, Sarah, to the kids in Sitka in this district. So, on behalf of your colleagues, thank you for your time and commitment to this district and we wish you'd nothing but the best in retirement.
Thank you, Mike. Any other persons to be heard this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item nine. Windows next year, which are reports and presentations. You have any reports and presentations this evening? Okay, moving right along to item 10, board member reports. Paul, would you mind going first?
I don't have so much to report, but since I didn't get a chance to, I wanted to chime in and Phil went through all, but actually it's all three of, whoa, Laura and Kernine and Phil. You know, it's always amazing to me how many lives your staff get to touch and whether directly or indirectly and, yeah, just the experiences that I've had personally and then what I know beyond that, it's just mind-blowing. And I know lots and lots of so many adults have been touched by all of your lives and or all of your work, respected so much, especially I guess with Phil still being here and Sarah, you guys' commitments to reaching those students who maybe don't even wanna be reached and just like the persistence and that vision is, it's really inspiring and thank you guys for doing that all these years, so that's off to you. Thanks.
Paul? Blossom?
I just wanted to touch base on Laura Rogers. I called Blatchley Middle School today to sign up my daughter Tesman for the Jump Start Summer Program and Laura answered the phone and, like she always does, she is right there working and completely knew what I was talking about and gave me the direct information of what I needed to do to get my daughter signed up and I think it really shows how dedicated she has been throughout her employment for the district. She was just working away and it never came up and I had to think about it tonight and I was like, "Oh, my goodness, she's retiring and we didn't even, I didn't even have a moment to say anything." We were just talking business, but I think that's just the way Laura is and so, I really appreciate, I have appreciated working with her and her ability to bring the facts and the work ethic that keeps, you know, a middle school going and that's a feat all into its own at times as a mother with a middle schooler, I feel kind of out of place. So, I'm really thankful for the team over there at Blatchley. I really don't have anything other to report as, you know, I'm excited to hear more about the Jump Start Program for the middle schoolers and it seems like it would be a great opportunity for some of the students within our district to keep that momentum going throughout the summer.
Thank you, Blossom. Todd?
Um... To the retired, to the teachers retiring, congratulations. Work pays off and here you are. Um, retiring is one of those things I wish I could do, but it is coming, but congratulations to you guys. The only other thing I can think of is I keep on coming back to the fun I had at graduation, my graduation, my graduation and the rites of passage was very fun for me. I did enjoy that, especially first go around for that and I can't wait for that again.
All right, thank you, Todd. For my reports, yes, ditto of course about graduations, being on the board and getting to have that front row seat is such an honor for Sitka High School, Pacific High School, being there and getting to stand there as those kids literally cross that threshold and get to shake their hands and congratulate them is really awesome. Really great to see more typical ceremonies happening in light of, in the light of the last few years, so all of us came away very inspired by those graduations, both by students and by staff. One of the greatest honors I think that a board president gets to do is sign diplomas and I got to go by Reach High School, which is our online learning program and sign a few of those and it was actually before our last meeting, but I had other things on my list and I forgot to report on it. But I got to spend a few minutes, about 45 minutes, in Mrs. Eels' room. She was having a enrichment day, it was a Friday, I think, and so, students who are in the Reach program were all in the classroom together doing an art activity and it was just a great chance to get to interact with some of them, signed a few diplomas there, but then get to talk with some of the students who are members of our Reach program, get to ask them a few questions and then talk to Mrs. Eels about the program. And it was just, it was just a great classroom, there's all kinds of resources in there for parents who are interested in the Reach program, all kinds of curriculum, books, learning tools and activities. It's not just sending parents off on their own, "Good luck teaching your kid." So, it's, I was just really grateful to get a more up-close view finally of our Reach program and I would just encourage my fellow board members, if you haven't had time to go in and check out the Reach program, to do that because it's a neat thing that we have right here in our very district. And I guess it's been said before, I hate to put a financial component to it, but the more students we can keep in our Reach program, the better that is for our district financially, obviously, than the many other options they have in an online world. And it's not just you should stay local just to keep the money here, but it is a fantastic program and I just really appreciated getting an up-close look at that. So, just kudos to Mrs. Eels and everyone else involved in the Reach High School program. And of course, again, congratulations getting to this point in the year, summertime, it's great. It's nice that the weather feels like summertime too. So, that's all I have too. So, moving on to item 11, administrative reports.
Oh, thank you very much. So, I'd like to, for the budget update, just kinda go through and highlight a couple things. The legislature, as many of you are aware, passed a budget on the last day of the session. The budget has gone to the governor for consideration and a couple things I just wanted to highlight with our budget update this month is just kinda talking a little bit about what that potentially, that bill and that budget potentially has and means for the Sitka School District. There are a couple of education relation, related funding items on there. Perhaps the most important, while there were two BSA bills that, you know, would've potentially had a significant impact and positive impact on the foundation formula and the impact that would have on funding for the district, neither of those bills passed. There was a $57 million one-time funding into the foundation formula that was in that budget. That would equate to about $577,000 for the Sitka School District if that stays in and that is approved by the governor. In addition, what is termed the Alaska Reads Act was passed, which includes early education program grants, early literacy screening, teacher training around literacy, direct support for low-performing schools and intensive reading interventions. We are gonna be doing some more in-depth review of the Reads Act and looking at how that might benefit and help support our early readers in the Sitka School District as well. And one other thing that might not have been noticed and I think it's important to highlight is there was $100 million put into the CIP maintenance projects. The CIP list has, hasn't seen much support or some money towards that over the last several years. If that $100 million is passed in the budget, it would fund up to number 55 on the CIP list. And, you know, we, Sitka Schools, have several projects that are actually on that list. Unfortunately, our first project, which is the Kikusheheen Covered Playground, is number 64 on that list, so that's unfortunate, but I would like to look at the silver lining in that if this passes and we're able to get through those 55, that moves us in our first item, number 64, up a lot closer than it was and also brings the other items that are on the CIP list that much closer for consideration if future funding is made available for the CIP projects. Were there any questions on the budget update? All right, so then looking at the enrollment, we ended our enrollment with 1,114 students and so, a couple things with the enrollment that I just wanted to highlight is we've been seeing some really good numbers coming into our kindergarten, first grade and so, really pleased to see those numbers are staying strong and we look like we have some full classes taking place there, so really excited about that, so. And then transitioning into my superintendent report, as always, I really would like to spotlight our schools and we're actually gonna take a look at the last days of schools before summer break, so... So, I wanna start off with, Bearinoff was celebrating some young authors and illustrators and here is Ms. Christiansen's class and so, wanted to highlight some of our amazing young readers and writers and artists. The year also culminated at Bearinoff with a day at the beach, so the students got a chance to go to the rec and enjoy a day at the beach and have some fun. Couple of great, you know, pictures here and see some sea life and play around. And of course, a day at the beach is not complete without some smores, so they had a fire pit sing-along, so really excited to have that opportunity. a fire pit sing-along, so, uh, really excited to have, uh, that opportunity for Baranoff students. I also got a chance to go in and spend a couple of minutes in, uh, Ms. Eddie's class before they were getting ready to go on the, uh, trip. And, uh, she was getting it set up for her kindergartners, how to ride the bus. And so she had a little mock bus set up and I was so honored to be asked to be the driver and so I got a chance to walk them through and drive them around and they really wanted to stop by McDonald's, you know, and so we had that opportunity. So it was a lot of fun to give them that opportunity and walk through and help them as they are getting a chance to go on a field trip and ride the bus, many of them for the first time, so, um, that was a lot of fun. Uh, Keet Gushahin hosted a last day block party, so students had a chance to participate in brain puzzles, art projects, open gym, board games, music games. Um, this video that I have, I'm hoping we got the video figured out, is arguably one of the most impressive, uh, Jenga feats I have ever seen. If you would have seen this, I mean, take a look at this.
Would you play that one more time, Chris?
This thing was, I mean, just so impressive to see, you know, this, like, happen and it was. Ah! Though I have to say, just watching the students kind of like look at this and, and play around with it and everything, it was, uh, something, um, I don't even know how it was still standing, so it was pretty, uh, pretty cool. Um, there was also some face painting and popcorn and it really was a great way to end the school year, um, for Keet Gushahin's students. Uh, students at Blatchley had some fun activities, too, uh, at the end of the school. Uh, here's a group of, uh, you know, students who participated in a sit-up challenge and a group centipede challenge. So if you can see the picture there, the group centipede challenge. And I really have to give my hats off to the students at the back who were anchoring the centipede while everyone else got into place. And so, uh, they were the ones holding it, uh, the longest while everyone else was kind of putting the centipede together, so, uh, that was a lot of fun to see them do that as well. Um, Blatchley, uh, eighth grade students also celebrated the rite of passage from middle school. Uh, here we have the eighth graders released for the final time by Principal White as Blatchley Middle School students. It was really exciting to be there, um, much like Todd said, and, uh, you know, shake hands and recognize our middle school students that are transitioning to the high school. At Pacific High School, uh, wanted to, uh, celebrate and show a picture. If you have not seen Phil in his green suit, uh, that's Phil in his green suit, so very impressive. Uh, I actually want to find out who his tailor is, 'cause I feel like I'm a little outdated and, and need to get some nice, uh, nice new suits there. But, um, this is also a great opportunity, uh, they started breaking the ground for the foundation for the greenhouse, which was really exciting and so we're really great to see that and have that opportunity for Pacific High School. Um, Pacific High School also celebrated our very first SSD class of twenty twenty-two graduation and this is a picture of our first graduate that walked across the class. I was really excited, I thought I'd get a picture of her. And she's the first student that I, as a superintendent, got a chance to graduate, so that also was, uh, a special moment for me as well. Uh, this is the Pacific High graduating class of twenty twenty-two, so I just want to take that moment to congratulate our Pacific High graduates. It was a wonderful ceremony and great to see the students there and all the support, um, from the community and from the teachers and from, uh, Mandy, the principal. It was just a great opportunity and a great recognition of our students. Our talent, talented Sitka High School Wolves competed in straight, uh, in, uh, state track and field and music events over the last, uh, month or so. Uh, want to take this moment to congratulate a Region Five champion, boys and girls track team. Also, girls were second in states, excited about that. I'd also like to congratulate Sitka High School Boys, uh, baseball, Region Five champs. They're actually starting state tomorrow in Anchorage, so the first game of state is tomorrow in Anchorage. I think we're a little bit behind on the slideshow. There's our track team. Some of our baseball players for senior night. All right. And the big event, of course, was graduation. Uh, this is our Sitka High School class of twenty twenty-two, walking through the halls of our schools and being celebrated by the elementary and middle school students for their accomplishment, which is, I think, probably one of the coolest traditions I've seen, all the graduates get a chance to walk around all the schools and walk through the halls. And I got a chance to see them as they're walking through, um, Keet and seeing the students, uh, clap and applaud and just celebrate and recognize them and just talk about, you know, just not only being recognized for the accomplishment, but also giving opportunity to, um, show the younger students how, you know, how, what they get a chance to look forward to and so really inspire them. So I just wanted to highlight that tradition. And of course, congratulations to the Sitka High School class of twenty twenty-two. Um, just a couple of, uh, great, uh, you know, things to say about that. It was such an amazing, uh, presentation, having the students up there, being able to see them there. And then also, we really loved having a full house, um, this year for all of the celebration, making sure that we had the families and the community that was there. Um, and that's another thing that we really were able to bring back this year is bringing everybody together. And so I just want to take that opportunity to thank all the parents and family who came to celebrate our graduates. But also, one of the things I was really moved by is looking out in the audience and seeing so many of our teachers, um, and staff out in the, um, audience as well, um, being there, supporting our graduates. Many of those students they have had since they were in elementary school and just seeing the whole community come together and support and celebrate and recognize our students, just, like I said, it just, it was just, uh, just heartwarming for me to see that. So I just wanted to thank our staff, too. Um, another fun condit- uh, tradition, uh, that has continued is the, uh, after graduation parade and so, uh, a number of the students decorated their car and broke out their lazy boy seats to sit in the back of the truck as they got paraded through town and it was great to see it. I want to thank the, um, Sitka PD for, uh, you know, taking the lead on that and, uh, helping to keep that, uh, fun and safe as students were, uh, being paraded around town. Um, and then, uh, as far as, you know, just another great picture of the students kind of making their way around the roundabout, it looks like. And lastly, just some last minute announcements I wanted to say, um, Keet Gushahin and Blatchley Middle School Summer School, starting June sixth of the twenty-third. Um, as, uh, Blossom mentioned, uh, um, Blatchley Middle School Jump Start, uh, starts on July twenty-fifth through August eleventh. A great opportunity for students to get a start, uh, to the next school year. And I know it's just the start of summer, but I, I would be remiss in not putting out this school year start for next year. Teacher's first day coming back is August sixteenth. All teachers, please block your ears so you don't hear that. And of course, students' first day back is, uh, August twenty-third. And that is it for my report.
Thank you for those reports. And that takes us all the way through, uh, item eleven. So item twelve, new business. Item twelve A. Andrew Hames' resignation. Motion, please.
I move to accept Andrew Hames' resignation effective June second, twenty twenty-two.
It has been moved and seconded to accept Andrew Hames' resignation effective June second, twenty twenty-two. Public comment to the motion?
Good evening, Mike Vera, again. Uh, just wanted to say, um, if you do accept the resignation, that we want to thank you for your time on the board. Um, you've served through a really tough time, uh, unprecedented time on the board and we value your voice and leadership and, uh, just feel like you were just hitting your stride. So, um, we're gonna, we're gonna miss your voice there as a former educator that, uh, understood both sides of the coin and both worlds and, um, but rumor has it that there's gonna be, uh, an opportunity in your future that, uh, I'm excited about as well. So, um, we want to just say thank you for your time and service and we appreciated your, uh, your commitment.
Thank you very much, Mike. Any other public comment? Board discussion on the motion? Being none. Uh, well, again, the motion is to accept Andrew Hames' resignation effective June second. Any board members opposed to the motion? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item twelve B, uh, approval of selection of new board member. And this is for the first seat that was open. We have, uh, possible draft motions, but, uh, let's discussion, um, we know we had a letter signac- submitted from, uh, Ms. Nelson before the deadline. And, um, yeah, the board needs to discuss how we'd like to move forward. With the second seat open, um, I think that presents some possibilities and with only receiving, uh, one letter, we really have until the deadline to, um, fill Amy's seat. Her resignation was effective May eighteenth, uh, so there would need to be another special meeting before that if the board chooses to deal with two seats at the same time, uh, and considering any other letters that we would have received in the time between, uh, when it was open for Amy's seat and then, uh, this seat, or if we want to, uh, move forward with this. So looking for feedback or comments from the board or possible motions.
My only, um, my only question would be in light of your resignation and trying to fulfill the day, the, the deadline for Amy's, um, vacancy, the special meeting that we would have to, um, put on the calendar would be before June eighteenth, correct? June seventeenth?
Yeah, that's correct. We would have to have it before June seventeenth. We would have to have that meeting to fill.
So, um, where here, um, usually, what, what day would work for this special meeting?
So, two weeks from today is June fifteenth. And, um, typically, our meetings are on a Wednesday. I think we've had them on other nights of the week, but, um, that could be a golden opportunity. Uh, it would just be two weeks from today on the fifteenth and we'd need to set that meeting, uh, in the motion.
And it would give us enough time for, for Dawn to give all the, um, notific- notifications and everything.
Yeah. I think we'd reset the, we'd say the new deadline for letters, um, including what we've already received. Um, what would that, do we know what that date might be? Would it be the week before or several days before? You can help me jog my memory with the timeline?
Yeah, so a couple of different options as we go through. I mean, we, there's no specific timeline as far as how many days we have to have it out there. We just need to make sure that we put it available to get, uh, letters of interest and then we have to make sure that we notify the public so we can get feedback from the public. Um, if we're looking at a date of the fifteenth, we could, um, have a PSA available and out, uh, to all media outlets and social media, um, as early as tomorrow, uh, depending on what the board decides. Um, and we can have it open through, uh, next week, uh, say the eighth or the ninth, um, and then get feedback, uh, from the, again, late the next week until the, um, fifteenth, if that would be the date of the board. In addition, if we wanted to, you know, if, if people can't do that second week, if anyone's going on vacation or leaving, we could move it up a little bit if we wanted to and do, um, you know, uh, having the PSA go out tomorrow and then maybe having it close on the seventh or the eighth of next week, at which point, you know, giving the public, uh, a couple of days to, two to three days to provide feedback. I think giving them two to three days to provide feedback and maybe have on, on the third day, uh, the, um, special meeting, uh, board meeting would be, uh, that'd be my recommendation. So we can look at dates, whatever works with everyone's schedule, but I mean, yeah, we could, if we were looking at the fifteenth, I would say, you know, open it tomorrow, um, have it close maybe on the tenth and then we get feedback, uh, or we can announce, have it close on the ninth, announce on the tenth, give through the weekend, um, and then we can have the meeting, um, on the fifteenth or fourteenth, thirteenth, whatever that works for people. Or we can move it up earlier, too.
Sure.
So the deadline for, um, any letters of interest would be June ninth?
Um, I, I think we need to determine that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, so it could be whatever we want.
Well, that's.
Within that framework.
Within the framework of this discussion, what, what days do you think would be a good deadline for people?
Uh, I, I, I agree with what, um, Mr. Hauser said. I think, you know, getting, if the PSA were to go out tomorrow, I think giving a, a week until maybe the ninth and then, um, having those, uh, having that weekend for feedback and then if you all wanted to set the meeting for the thirteenth, which is a Monday, or fourteenth or fifteenth, whatever, whatever works best for everybody, um, I think that, that's, that's what I would suggest, if anyone else has any insight on those dates. That fits within our parameters? Yeah, so, um, we're still within the parameters of, we, we have thirty days, um, according to board policy to, to fill a vacant seat. Um, so Amy's resignation was effective May seventeenth, eighteenth, sorry, so then we, yeah, up to the seventeenth, um, to get it, to get it filled, uh, of June. So, uh, yeah, we're not, we're not stretching any, any policies in that regard. Okay. That sounds reasonable to me.
I, I, yeah, I bel- I believe if we're used to having, um, meetings on one stage, mentally as a schedule, um, it also gives, um, us some time as board members to look over any, um, correspondence that, um, may come in, um, from the public as well. Um, so, do we all agree that the fifteenth would be a good time to reschedule or to set up this special meeting?
I think, yeah, I mean, you three are the ones who will, who will be doing it. So need to make sure you're all available.
Yeah, that's fine. So I think it's important to throw out there. I mean, you know, so basically, we got a lot of public feedback about having, creating a bigger pool.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what, that's why you guys want to create, do it this way, right?
Right. One, one applicant doesn't.
Right. I mean, I guess playing devil's advocate there, the only thing I can see is that none of them, we only have three people voting out rather than, I guess that's kind of unavoidable if we're only considering one.
Right. You would have three and so then the selections would be, have to be unanimous between the three of you. Um, that's exactly the scenario when, when Blossom and I were appointed, uh, two summers ago, almost exactly two years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there were three, three members voting.
But that was way longer ago than that.
(laugh) I know. See, it feels longer. Um, but, yeah, and then, um, also to, to state publicly that, um, then these appointments are only up until the October election, correct? Because I think there was some thought or thinking that filling the seat that was vacant, you would finish out that person's term. Um, so, but that's not the case. These are just, um, I want to use the word temporary appointments, um, but they are up and, up through October is what it would be. And then if the person selected for the seat wanted to retain that seat, they would need to run for it, begin exactly what happened to us. So, um, so, yeah, that's how that would, that's how that would play out. Check all the boxes in my.
Right. So in light of the addition of a second vacant board seat, I move to postpone the se- the selection of the new board member to fill the vacancy created by Amy Morrison's resignation under a special school board meeting June fifteenth, where the vacancy left by Andrew Hames will also be filled. Deadline to submit a letter of interest for either of these seats will be June ninth.
Is there a second? Sorry. It has been moved and seconded in light of the addition of a second vacant board seat. We postpone the selection of the new board member to fill the vacancy created by Amy Morrison's resignation until a special school board meeting held on June fifteenth, where the vacancy left by Andrew Hames will also be filled. The deadline to submit a letter of interest for either of these seats will be June ninth. Is there any public comment to the motion? Ms. Nelson, good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you for your, um, service, Mr. Hames, and I would like to state that I didn't hear anything after I put the letter of interest in and I got a call from Dawn, I believe, in Mr. Hauser's office today, asking me to be here to be interviewed. So if you're going to put this off, I, I don't agree with it, but, um, I- So if you're going to put this off, I, I don't agree with it, but, um, I put my name in because nobody else had. And, um, I don't intend to run for school board, but I have experience with your budgets and everything else. I'm a lifelong resident and I don't, you know, I, I have no preference one way or the other. It's four more meetings and whatnot and I thought I could be of assistance. So, thank you for considering me and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment? Yeah, please.
Hi, okay. My name is Sarah Ferenczi, um, and I just wanted to, uh, publicly reiterate the testimony that I made to you via email, which is that I appreciate you considering, um, a wider pool of candidates. Your board policy does state that when making an appointment to the board, the board desires to draw from the widest possible number of candidates and one simply is not a wide number of candidates. Um, uh, I've spoken to a number of people. I don't intend to run, just to be really clear. I have no skin in the game, um, other than children in the district or child in the district. Uh, but I just wanna, um, uh, lost my train of thought. Oh, I wanted to say, I've spoken to a number of people who are interested in this, um, and who are just really unaware. I think with everything going on in May and graduations and all that, a lot of people were just really unaware that that was open. And so, um, it has, I, in my recollection, it has been done in the past to postpone it like this and I think it's a good idea. So, thank you for making that consideration and I want to voice my support.
Thank you for your comments, Sarah. Any other public comment to the motion? Seeing none, we'll move back to board deliberation. Um, yeah. Um, anyone have any other comments on this? Questions, clarifications, concerns?
Uh, I just think it fits. Box is one person. People came after the deadline. Created a pool and adding the two together seems like.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only other thing that I would add to this, I think the, I think the interest was there. I just don't think that somehow, I mean, whether as Ms. Ferenczi suggested or whatever the case was, we didn't really reach our, our, all of the pool or whatever this case may be until Sentinel, you know, published something last week and then all of a sudden people were like, oh, this is going on. Um, so I wonder if maybe we could put on the list of things to do to maybe we should rev- review the policy on this one so that we can talk about when it happens again, how we can be more effective and not have to reinvent this process each time. So, um, I guess that's all I would add to it.
(laugh) Thanks, Sarah. Um, yeah, I think that's a good, I think that's a good point. Um, and I do want to say from the table, um, Valerie, thank you for getting your, for your letter in and, um, you will, you will still be considered a candidate, um, at our June fifteenth meeting unless we hear otherwise from you. So, um, uh, we really appreciate you taking the time and being on top of that, uh, getting your letter in. Um, Blossom, do you have anything else to say?
No, I wanted to reiterate, um, the thanks to Valerie Nelson for adhering to the deadline and, um, submitting your letter of interest. You have served SITCA within various, um, roles and seats within our city and, um, you know, I really do appreciate, um, the time that you put in, um, to submit a letter of interest on time. Um, due to, you know, the circumstances of only having one person within the pool and having our bylaws the way that they are. Um, along with, I believe it's just the perfect storm of having Andrew's resignation, um, effective tomorrow. It's in the best interest of the school board to, um, you know, have this special meeting on the fifteenth and, um, open up, um, the new, um, deadline for the ninth, um, at which time Ms. Nelson will still be, um, considered. Um, and so thank you for coming tonight and, um, ha- you know, spending time, um, with the intention of being interviewed. I'm sorry that, um, that wasn't the case this evening. Um, but, um, I hope to see you on the fifteenth and to, um, you know, ask the questions that we will have of you. So, thank you.
And just to go over that process, um, so people who have submitted a, an interest, a letter of interest or are interested in submitting a letter of interest. Um, the way that process would go is we would bring you back here to that special meeting on June fifteenth. Uh, we will make sure everyone's here and then all of the candidates will leave the room. We'll bring everyone in one at a time to be interviewed by the board. Uh, I believe it's three questions that we will ask. Um, won't say what those questions are now, um, but, uh, just, just a few simple questions, uh, for us to, for the board to get to, um, know your thinking a little bit. We'll send you back out until everyone is completed. Then all of the candidates will come back in the room and then, uh, the board will vote via hand ballot. Um, and again, it will have to be unanimous between these three people. Uh, they'll fill Amy's seat and then my seat after that. So, uh, that's how that process will go. And then heads up, if you are selected, you'll come right up to the table (laugh) and start voting. Um, I'll never forget that. You, you were like, well, you were there, you were on the phone, but I remember just thinking like, o- okay, here I am. And, uh, yeah, I think, yes. So, um, so be ready for that if, if you are selected. Um, it's not, we'll see you next time. It's, it's right away that you become a, a board member. So, not to scare you off, but. Right. And then the board will be, uh, reorganized at that point. Uh, the board members will vote for, uh, who should be the board president, vice president, uh, secretary, is that the title? And, uh, clerk, thank you clerk. And then, um, I don't think we'll discuss school assignments and all of that stuff until the fall. Um, whereas liaisons and different committees that you're, uh, involved with as well. So, Mike, did you have a question? That's a great question. It wasn't, it didn't happen that way when we did it, but I suppose it, it could. Um, what do you all, like, do we need to check?
The Frank Joyce thing, didn't we?
Uh, yeah, I don't remember.
They have to be sworn in first. So the new board members would need to be sworn in first before they would be able to act in the capacity of a board member.
Okay. Right. So I think these three will select the two and then they'll be sworn in and then it's ready, set, go. Okay. Um, no, I think we can just, I'll just say we're, we're done discussing and, uh, I don't think we need to do a roll call vote. Um, so again, it was moved and seconded. Uh, to postpone the selection of the new board member to fill the vacancy created by Amy Morrison's resignation until a special school board meeting June fifteenth. Where the vacancy left by Andrew Hames will also be filled. The deadline to submit a letter of interest for either of these seats is June ninth. Are any board members opposed to the motion as presented? Seeing none, the motion passes.
And if I may, just, uh, while everyone's here and we're talking about it, um, the next board meeting now that has been set on the fifteenth will be at the district office boardroom. So I just want to make sure it won't be here. It'll be in the boardroom in the district office. So, and we'll make sure that we, uh, get that out there when we announce the, um, special meeting.
Okay. Um, will that room be big enough, probably? If not, do we have alternate location in that building?
We can move everyone to the multipurpose room.
Yeah, okay. I just
So we can, we'll find a space.
Just trying to think ahead. There's a lot of
Yeah.
Okay. Not for social distancing or anything. Just, yeah, just thinking about, of the, uh, people. Okay, great. So June fifteenth, uh, at the district office boardroom at Keet Kusheen Elementary School. All right. Item twelve C, which is the approval of SITCA Education Association negotiated agreement. Have a motion, please.
Move to approve the SITCA Education Association negotiated agreement as presented.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the SITCA Education Association negotiated agreement as presented. We have this attachment on our, on our agenda, but this was quite the process getting to this point. So do we have any questions or, um, highlights that we want to, uh, bring on this, uh, agreement?
I, I would just say, you know, I, I want to take this opportunity. We started in October, um, through the negotiated process. Uh, finished up in May and I just want to thank SEA, uh, and the, um, SEA team for their commitment, dedication, uh, and just the collaborative approach, um, in working through the process. It, it took some time, but I think, you know, we, uh, we're happy to, uh, have a tentative agreement in front of us. So, thank you to SEA and the members of the team.
Yeah, um, we did receive regular updates on the process of, of that, um, agreement. And I know it was a lot of effort on, from both parties put into that. So, um, thank you to our lead negotiator, uh, Mr. Hauser, and then SEA and its members for being involved in that very important process as well. Uh, glad we can get to this point. Any questions or comments from the board on this agreement?
Want to recognize that the amount of work was put into this, um, and on both sides. So, um, tonight to have an agreement, um, you know, completed and in our agenda and us voting on it, um, means a lot. So thank you for the, all the time, um, and work.
Yeah, uh, I say this as a compliment. Oftentimes, a lot of our written updates on this via email, uh, would come in at, what, eleven thirty at night? So, uh, we, we were all aware of the timestamps, um, of when, of when people were, uh, fretting over, over the process and what the next steps might be. So, uh, yeah, ditto.
I think one of my quotes is Frank, go to bed.
(laugh)
Great news.
It was only, it was only twelve thirty in the morning, Blossom, so that's okay. I, I, I do, if, if I may, I, I do want to take a moment to, um, thank, uh, my team too. I, I, you know, really it's, it's the team, uh, you know, two teams coming together and Chris Veron, um, Leslie Young, uh, Jill LaCrone and, uh, Sandra Lundvig. Uh, I want to thank them for being on the team as well and, uh, you know, working, uh, with all of us through the process. And so, um, thank you. And yes, um, I, I, if I could have changed those, uh, times, I, I would have, so people would have known that I'm not up at twelve thirty at night writing, uh, emails updating everyone, so.
Okay. Uh, so this is a two-year agreement, so it'll be revisited. I hate to say, it's like, it's like getting through an election and being like, oh, the next one's coming right up, so. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Public comment on this, uh, thank you. I'm getting wound up with kudos. Uh, any public comments on the agreement? Thanks for that. Okay, seeing none. Um, go ahead and vote and we'll do a roll call vote on this one. So the motion is, again, uh, the approval of, sorry. Need multiple screens. Uh, approval of the SITCA Education Association Agreement, Negotiated Agreement as Presented. Roll call vote, please.
Blossom Teal Olsen?
Yes.
Todd Gebler?
Yes.
Paul Ryu?
Yes.
Andrew Hames?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Great. Uh, item twelve D, the approval of SITCA Educational Support Professional Association negotiated agreement. Have a motion, please.
I move to approve the SITCA Educational Support Professional Association negotiated agreement as presented.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the SITCA Educational Support Professional Association negotiated agreement as presented. Is there any public comment to this motion? Any board comment, discussion, questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote and do a roll call vote on this one as well. Uh, again, the motion to approve SITCA Educational Support Professional Association negotiated agreement as presented.
Blossom Teal Olsen?
Yes.
Todd Gebler?
Yes.
Paul Ryu?
Yes.
Andrew Hames?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Great. Item twelve E, the approval of school lunch fee increase. Can I have a motion, please? I can do it. I move to approve the school lunch fee increase as presented.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the school lunch fee increase as presented. Any public comment to this fee increase? Seeing none, I'll go on. Leslie, do you want to speak to this at all? Will you please?
Hello, Leslie Young. Um, so of course the lunch program has had significant, uh, revenue due to COVID, um, which is great. But of course, uh, now that things are settling back down, the, a lot of the vendors are rebidding and the costs are coming up higher. So it's across the state that we're seeing significant int- increases in the food costs, um, supply chain issues. And then the vended meals like we do, uh, the, the RFP that was approved last month was a significant increase of what we had paid prior. Um, so we have to align the cost of a paid meal to what the cost of the, what it's costing us to pay for the meal. Um, and of course we get reduced, uh, rate meals. We get forty cents from a meal. And then we get reimbursed by the, uh, USDA funds. So with, uh, the fund balance that we currently have, um, we ended our school year at three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, uh, fund balance. And the state, uh, pretty much allows a three-month, uh, reserve, which is usually about two hundred and sixty. So we are over significantly, hence why we've been spending and buying some new refrigerators and freezers. Uh, supporting the food to school program with Pacific High to get that underneath our fund balance, which will still, uh, have, you know, earned enough money this year to help pay for those costs and then offset the costs that we will be taking, um, for this coming year's, uh, costs that we'll be absorbing from the not having, not paying enough for the, having students pay enough that are in the paid status to pay for a full meal. And then realigning what a second meal costs, which is not a significant, um, many meals that are second meals. And it's usually only an opportunity at the middle and high school where kids can take a second meal. But those costs sh- need to be in line with what we pay. So that's the proposed is to, to make a very clean distinction of a second meal, cause it's not reimbursed. We don't receive any funding for it. It should sustain itself. So, you know, again, we'll do some effort to make sure that we're articulating that cost increase. And that if anyone takes second meals, that, the full cost of that meal needs to, uh, at least be at what we're paying for the meal to be made.
Right.
Any questions?
Um, yeah, just for things like second meals, there's obviously, I would assume there's counts done on that at the beginning of the day, know how much to prepare to eliminate waste and all of that.
Yeah, in the elementary schools, it's, uh, they're, they do student counts, uh, of, of preparing for the meal. Uh, breakfast is usually kind of an, uh, you get your estimate and you kind of move forward from there. And the high school, they pretty well follow a good trend. Um, this year, of course, since meals are free as well as last year, our percentage increased, so, um, of participation. So that's great. Um, and we anticipate the participation to be reduced, um, uh, but, you know, that's built into most of Nana's costing. They kind of assume, you know, that's why they give us a flat rate, no matter what the meal is. They kind of, uh, but, uh,
Yeah.
Yeah, they do a pretty good job of, um, managing that and we have some guidelines in place for what those expectations are for, through the National School Lunch Program we have to follow. And production records and all the above, uh, manages that kind of costing.
So the information, um, of this change, um, what venues will you be using to notify families of this change?
Uh, well, there'll be a, the back to school issue. That's why we needed to get this information out. out now, depending on what you guys approve. And then will be published in our back-to-school issue and then will be, all the schools usually send stuff home and notices throughout their media platforms. So, and then, of course, when we send out our notification in mid-July about reapplying for the Free and Reduced Lunch Program, all those prices will be then contained on that literature that's going to go out to every household. And then, you know, there's a process of anybody that's Free and Reduced eligible, they'll all, everybody will get the notification, but then at once they determine Free and Reduced eligible, you know, they'll stop getting my NAG notes for reapplying for the Free and Reduced Lunch Program if they're already in it. But everyone has to reapply every year unless you're receiving a direct certification from, like, public assistance or you're qualified as a migrant student. So, there's multiple ways to be determined Free. Reduced, of course, is specifically done with the income application. And I strongly encourage people that think their income will meet, once those income guidelines are going to be published in July also, is to consider applying. Those income guidelines change all the time, or every year at least, and the benefit helps the district out in many ways, even if your child's aren't going to be participating in the lunch program. So, it's helpful, there's other benefits for becoming eligible if you're, I think the city usually does a subsidy for the utility bills and they have done that for the last few years, and one of the ways is to apply for the Free and Reduced Lunch Program and if qualified, that letter will then serve as designation for that eligibility if the city continues to do that. I strongly encourage everyone to consider to, their income and compare it to the income guidelines and apply. Or become migrant eligible, which is really important too.
Okay. Other questions for Leslie?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for speaking on this. Other discussion by the board on this issue?
We, this will have to be voted, we will have to vote on this, correct?
Yep.
In light, to be completely transparent, myself and my family are NANA shareholders and due to new policy that we've passed, I believe, I am unable to vote, so I will be abstaining from this vote.
Okay. Paul or Todd, any questions or comments before we vote? Sure, let me take a minute.
In the mornings at Key, is it still fresh fruit?
Yeah, we still have the fresh fruit and vegetable grant.
And that is separate from the grant?
Yes, the fresh fruit and vegetable grant is only eligible for the elementary schools. And we have been granted it for like the last four years and we just were granted again for this coming year. And usually, again, it's based off of our enrollment and a set price per child that they kind of grant out. And the first grant was for the first three months of school, July, August, and September, and that's to use to get your stuff, all your stuff in place, and then they'll reappropriate all the funding that wasn't used and add it into the second grant. So, it's a great way to utilize that funding and it's great and everybody loves it.
Um, I'm leery to talk about food costs, but this is still, this is a very reasonable, I mean, it's, it is an increase from FY20, but around, you know, averaging six dollars for a lunch, I think, is still very affordable. Um, so, yeah, I'm in support of this. Todd or Paul, I don't know if you have any other comments or questions before we vote? Blossom, anything?
I, as a parent who, in the past, had a child who was a growing young boy, would go back for seconds and thirds, it's really important, I think, to let those families know that they will be charged for those second and third meals. I, at the end of the year, I got a very surprising bill because of his second and third meals. I'm just going to say, the food was very good, so it was worth it for him, but for families who may be on a budget, I think it's really important to be very clear that the second meals will be charged and fall.
Okay, so, motion is to approve the School Lunch Fee Increase as presented in our packets. We'll do a roll call vote and Blossom is abstaining.
Todd Gebler. Paul Ryu.
Yes.
Andrew Haynes.
Yes.
Motion passed.
We took a five, I can't get my board book logged out, so I don't have any of a...
I think we learned last time we need to make a motion, yeah?
Okay.
I believe we take a five-minute break.
Has been moved and seconded to take a five-minute break. Any public comment? For the record, there's still cake over there.
Cake break.
Uh, any board discussion? All right, any board members opposed to taking a five-minute break? Great, so we will recess for five minutes. Let's say, my computer clock is about to change to seven twenty, so we'll say we'll resume at seven twenty-five.
Why did my board book kick me out and now I can't get back in?
Does.
I'm in. Because the secure pager's at school this way.
You want to click on this?
Oh, wait a minute, did it?
There you go.
What is it doing for you?
Twenty-five, so we'll call this meeting back to order. Thank you for that break. Hope everybody who wanted some cake got some. Moving on to item 12S, is a discussion of proposed marijuana tax funding for Extracurricular Student Activities Fund. This item has been discussed by the Assembly on a couple of different meetings. And, uh, trying to put this on the agenda after a conversation that Todd had with one of the Assembly members, we thought it'd be a good idea to kind of, well, not kind of, to discuss it here at this table and figure if there's any input that we want to provide to this proposed tax that the Assembly is looking at. So, with that, open it up to board questions or comments. I know that one of the main talking points is specifying the money going to the Student Activities Fund and how that might impact the calculation of the cap. And so, if we need a little more clarification, Frank, you've explained this to me very eloquently in the past, if you want to chime in, I hate to throw it at you, but...
Yeah, that's fine, you just set me up though by saying I talked about it eloquently in the past, so now I think when I start talking about it, people are going to start questioning...
And then when I start filling words with...
Yeah, thank you for that. Um, yeah, one of the things that has come up and that I think is important, and first, I really, I just want to take a moment to praise the intent of the tax, to really provide an increased opportunity for our students to participate in extracurricular activities. And being able to provide that opportunity, I've said this many times, when anyone's ever come and talk to me and talked to me about sports and activities, I really do believe I was saved by high school sports. If it wasn't for a sport of swimming and me getting involved in my sophomore year, my life would have turned out completely different. It changed my life and so I absolutely recognize the benefits and really want to celebrate and support any student that wants the opportunity to participate in extracurricular activities, whether it's drama debate, forensic, whether it's chess club, whether it's, whatever that activity is that connects to a student and helps bring them to school, helps engage them in school, and helps to give them the opportunity to find something that they just love being a part of. I mean, I think it's so important for our students to have that opportunity and so I just want to take that opportunity to really highlight that. One of the things that did come up, though, in the conversation at the last Assembly meeting or at the Assembly meeting when they talked about the proposed marijuana tax, was that the money that was generated from the tax and the revenue that would be appropriated to the district based on that tax would be considered as part of the instructional funding that the city provides to the district and would count and go towards the cap. And one of the, I will say, one of the concerns that that, you know, has, you know, as we look at that is the money that goes towards instruction is, you know, what we use to fund our teachers in our classrooms, our support staff that supports students directly in the classrooms. And if the, if there was money that was appropriated that went specifically to the calculation that, you know, essentially determined what the cap was, for example, I think for year three of the proposed marijuana tax, the cost would be, I think, the money that could come to the SICA school just from that would be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If that were to happen, that would potentially be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that would take away from our ability to use that money and, you know, for instruction because it would be appropriated specifically to be used towards extracurricular activities in the schools, which could have an impact on our classroom and the instructional, you know, essentially, the classroom learning that's taking place because if, for some reason, that money's not available for instruction, that could have an impact on, you know, the amount of money we have available for teachers for a classroom or for other support staff, like I said. And so, those are some of the concerns that by having that money included in the, what we term the instructional side and not in the non-instructional funding, which has been what we've been requesting in the past for money from the city to go towards non-instructional costs, which are costs like student activities, travel. If it goes into the calculation for the cap, that could potentially have a very negative impact on the money, especially if that continues to grow over years and, you know, if it gets to be eight hundred thousand, you know, or more, and that then directly goes to the money that's appropriated specifically for activities that we cannot use from that money, we'd normally use towards instruction, or at least we'd have the discretion to utilize that for programs that we needed, you know, for the instruction side. As we've talked about in the budgeting process, you know, we're people business, you know, and so our costs and then costs associated, eighty percent of our budget goes towards personnel and being able to provide that. And so, any money that gets taken away from that instructional side or is potentially appropriated to not, or to something other than the ability to use for instructional could have a pretty significant impact, you know, moving forward.
Okay, yeah, thanks for, thanks for explaining that concern. Paul, go ahead.
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to, we, there's a discussion, we don't have a motion on the floor, so, yeah, would you mind coming up, Rebecca? I know you said you were excited to listen, but I'd like you to talk to, if you can. I think we'd all appreciate, from the Assembly perspective, on this proposed tax.
Rebecca Hemsht with the Assembly, thanks for inviting me up. I think it's really important that Mr. Hauser caught those lines, mentioned it to the three co-sponsors. We have a substitute ordinance and those lines are removed from that ordinance, so that doesn't mean that the rest of the Assembly will accept that, but the part that is the most concerning is no longer part of what we're proposing. And there have been some significant changes in talking with industry leaders here in town. We're going to change the ordinance, I don't know how much this matters to you guys, but what it will end up saying is taking away the regular sales tax that we charge on everything in town and replacing that with six percent starting January first and then the following year going to eight percent. And it had previously gone to ten percent, we're going to not do the ten percent, but there are some knock-on effects of that that we think will be beneficial to the community. So, we're trying to meet the industry partway, make this palatable to everybody, and take out those lines 171 and 172 in the old ordinance that would have created more of a problem for the district than a solution we were trying to get to. Really important to the Assembly, or at least to the three co-sponsors, that these funds be supplemental to the district's existing effort. So, our expectation is that the district will continue with current funding levels and will be adding to. And the ultimate goal, obviously elusive but worthy, will be to make school activities, if at all possible, free and open to everyone. That's the goal, but we'll baby-step our way to that. So, we're not exactly sure the mechanism we're going to use to require the district to maintain effort, probably something along the lines of the money being something that it's held with the city and provided as part of the outside the cap funding. So, there will be a mechanism within the new ordinance that clarifies that. If you have any questions, I can do my best. I don't have it in front of me, I got my Assembly device tonight.
When you mentioned outside the cap, you mean outside of, but, it would be extra, I think?
It would no, it would not be considered part of the city's support, mandatory support within the cap.
Okay.
And so, it would be the non-instructional things that we fund, such as pool and utilities for the PAC, would be in that category.
So, it was officially moved into the non-instructional sector of our budget, correct? With the new language?
It's not official yet, but the three co-sponsors have addressed that and when we bring it to the Assembly, it's our, our hope that the rest of the Assembly will agree. And that will be first reading, then we'll have a second reading and then it goes to the ballot.
And it, that, that new language will be put on the agenda next Assembly meeting, June fourteenth, I think? Know when the meetings are?
(laugh)
Uh, yeah, June fourteenth. June fourteenth will be first reading, twenty-eighth would be the second reading, unless there's an amendment, then we, we still have until the end of July to get through all the readings.
Do you find, in talking to people from the industry, the local industry, is there a lot of concern expressed about adding a tax?
Yeah, those discussions, like I said, we're trying to meet them partway by reducing the highest number. There are other concerns, such as the senior sales tax exemption will not apply this, and a couple of other things that the industry can address in other ways. So, we're hearing from the three, the three companies we've been talking with, one company has been very supportive, one company has become supportive through the changes that we're making, and we're not really hearing from the third company.
Um...
And when I say very supportive, they understand the need for activities and the, and targeting, using this as a means to that end is something they're supportive of.
Yeah, that's good to hear. Um, I was, I was on the City Commission of the Marijuana Advisory Committee before it actually became legal, so I got to participate in a lot of these discussions. And at that time, there was so much concern by people who were looking to starting a business, at being burdened down with taxes and not being able to, number one, be competitive with the black market, and number two, be sustainable with, you know, just the amount of expenses. Because of the nature of the products, they didn't have the same tax write-offs, you know, everybody knows. But then the, and so they were really hesitant, which at the time surprised me because one of the main advocates or reasons for legalizing was, we can tax this and we're not taxing it at all right now. And so, but then the thought was, let's get it, let's get things up on their feet and then we can revisit this a few years down the road. So, personally, I was, I was glad to see the Assembly take, take on an idea. And then, of course, we have many people, well, if you're going to do a tax, you got to say what it's going to be for, no, just new taxes for the sake of new taxes, which I understand that. And so, again, the intent of this, I think, is, is all in the right, is in the right place and I appreciate you and the sponsors of the bill being receptive to... And I appreciate, um, you and the sponsors of the bill being receptive to feedback, uh, from the district and from people in the industry, uh, because we do, we wanna see, we wanna see businesses thrive in our, you know, in our community. Um, so that was my only, uh, concern. Well, not, I mean, just right off the bat was, I'm like, oh, are they, are they even open to that? So I appreciate that they're being included in those discussions. Um, yeah, as long as the language has been, um, you know, amended so that we don't end up with any unintended consequences, um, hampering the district's ability to spend money where they need to spend money. Um, I, I think that was our main concern going into the discussion tonight. So, um, I definitely wanna leave room for other comments or questions from other board members, but I also would, um, I guess I wanna bring up formally, as I'm on my way out the door, how the board could be, um, you know, supportive or if we should be prepared to speak to this at any future assembly meetings or anything like that.
Yeah, could I add some additional content?
Yeah, please.
The marijuana, uh, Marijuana Advisory Committee that you were part of was in twenty sixteen, I believe?
I think so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And, um, I needed to review, it's been a year since I read the report that came out of that work, but I remember something like a three percent tax. And so that was considered on top of the five and six percent that we already have.
Right.
So this is, um, um, actually increasing the amount of good that this levy will do for activities by, by taking away the city's five or six percent. So to the industry, it's the same amount as what was suggested.
Okay, yeah, thanks for, yeah, 'cause I, also as a committee, we just made recommendations. We didn't, we didn't approve anything, so...
Right. And there, um, one of the leaders in the industry here in town, Michelle Cleaver, was saying that there's movement and a strong possibility that some of the banking issues they face will be remedied in the next few years.
Mhm.
And so this doesn't even, should it make the ballot then pass, it won't take effect until January first and then the ten percent is the following January first. So that's still kind of keeps them in the same place for another year and a half.
Okay.
And then it would go up to the, to the eight percent. Um, and I think, oh, and then I, you know, I would really encourage, um, the, the people we've been working with in the industry to reach out to the board with any concerns that they have. I hope I'm fairly representing what they said to us, but I'm kind of a, they said, I said, they said.
Sure.
So I wanna make sure that, um, I'm not misspeaking and I, you know, really want them to feel welcome to reach out to all of you. And then your support of this is valuable at the Assembly as well when we bring this up on the fourteenth. If, um, I don't know if you wanna speak as a board or as individuals, um, but we know, we know the value of activities for kids.
Yeah.
So, um, it seems like there's something else, but can't...
Sure. Okay. Paul, did you have any questions or...?
No questions per se. I mean, I do wanna comment that I think that, I mean, as, as much as I hate to see new taxes, I, I was thinking back to what Mike commented a couple of weeks ago or a few months ago about, you're possibly looking around at the good old days and we're looking at situations with, you know, rising costs and stagnant, if not declining, revenues. And if we're not working as a community to solve those problems before they reach our doorstep, then they're just gonna run us over. So hats off for, you know, forward thinking and making that happen and, and, uh, you know, all the work with the, with the Assembly to be, um, good partner to the district. And I hope that we can continue to find things like this that help, you know, niche us, um, maybe, as I suggested a few weeks ago, we might need to take a look at how we, as a municipality and a school district, compared to others in the state and where we fund, where we follow some of the funding 'cause it seems like we're, for the size and, I hesitate to use the word affluence by any means, but, um, for the size of the industry and population of our community versus some of those that are out there, um, you know, how do we really follow some of those other districts? I think this is a, a good facet to that diamond that we should be polishing. Yeah, hats off. I hope we can make it happen.
I think it, this is a really great, um, time to start this discussion. Um, um, I have been following it, um, not as closely, but, um, I think in the near future, as it moves forward, um, I would like to see, um, the, the Assembly and the School Board meet up and, and, and have, um, I know that we met at least one ti- one time before, um, um, on another subject, but, um, I think, you know, as discussions go along and language change and, um, you know, first and second readings happen, I think it would, would be a really great, um, way to, um, cohesively be on the same page, um, and show that we are working together and this is meant, um, to be for the children. And it is a good step towards helping equity measures rise within our city. So, you know, this, uh, again, I'm, I'm thankful it was on the agenda. Thank you again for the, you know, the sponsors of this, um, um, to be put forth as on the Assembly. Um, thank you for Frank, um, explaining his, his concerns. And I think in time it will iron itself out, but I would love to have that cohesive collaboration in person before everything's set in stone. So those are my thoughts. Thank you so much.
Sounds preliminary and, uh, first knee jerk reaction is, have a new stream. Check it in. Like I said, it's still in, in the two, new aspect of it if it, if it works out and I think we can make... Um, I guess one last question, if I can word this correctly. Um, the projected revenues, are projected revenues from a tax. If those change, um, I guess we, you just have X amount to assist with expenses outside of, of the cap and then you have to decide whether there are money you have to supplement that. Does that question make sense?
Absolutely. The intent is for you to maintain your efforts so the Activities Director is still within the cap, within the support that we already provide, um, the funding that you're already using, which is nowhere near reaching the needs of the, the students. Um, so all of that is intended to stay in place and anything that we can add would be icing on the cake, basically. So you guys still bake the cake and we'll try to frost it.
Great.
And it is a projection, but I can tell you that, um, sales tax revenue within that industry in Sika has continued to go up.
Mhm.
Um, and we do always have to acknowledge the risk of black market, um, when we increase taxes on this industry. Um, I guess there's a, a certain level of faith and trust in Sikkans to do the right thing.
Right.
And there, there won't be a huge bottom line difference to most people in town who are, who are using marijuana products.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think it'll be interesting to see how it, how it plays out. I, it's different, like you said, um, from a tobacco tax, 'cause there's not much of a black market for tobacco, but, um, every time that's gone up, it still, it does what it's intended to do, uh, which is to bring in money for different... So, okay, well, this has been informative and if anyone has any other questions or concerns, Frank, um, any other board members, any other questions for Rebecca or final comments?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if I can express the board's support to the Assembly. Is that a fair, I mean, there hasn't been a motion or a resolution or anything like that. So are you comfortable with me as liaison to the board going back to the Assembly and saying that there was strong support for this ordinance, this ballot measure?
With that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's kind of, I think we're a little bit outside Robert's rules, but, um...
(laugh)
The idea is to, to be able to say that we included you in the conversation and that this would be...
Yeah.
...beneficial to the district.
I mean, it'd be really great to have one of us there. Um, I won't be a board member on the fourteenth, but I'd, I'd be happy to come and just speak and say that as on the board, we had a discussion.
Right, we won't have a...
Probably, or you won't have, you won't have a discussion, will you?
We won't have a president of the board on the fourteenth, right? We're gonna be in a little gap.
Right.
So there's someone to speak for the board.
No. I think you, you could speak on our behalf and maybe some of us might be there just on our own volition, um, and just say that we, or I don't wanna be out of turn and say that I'm speaking on behalf of the board and I'm no longer a board member. But, um, I think that, you know, as our liaison, uh, you could speak, you could say that we discussed it, we expressed our, our concerns and then go from there.
And, and I will, I will make a point to be there, so...
Okay, great.
Have the opportunity to speak if, I, I was asked to come up last time. I imagine somebody might ask me to come up again and I can, uh, speak to that too as, um, if that's something that's over the line.
That'd be great.
Okay. Great. Thanks for taking the time to discuss it. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for discussing it with us. (laugh) That would be perfect. Perfect place to, to debut that. All right, uh, we do have, we're about halfway through New Business. Uh, we have some policies to approve, but first we have a few dates to discuss. Item twelve G, we need to set a School Board meeting date for our August meeting. Uh, item H is the outline of our School Board calendar, but there is no date for August. So we need to, uh, get a date. Um, we, uh, just going off the agenda. Do we always decide it at this meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no.
And, and it looks like in past, it's always the week before, um, teachers come back. So that would be the seventeenth of August if that's still in interest, but it doesn't have to be.
Okay. Yeah, so going off, yeah, you said the teachers, our teacher's first day, August sixteenth, right? Okay, yeah, that's, that's the notes I took on the first thing. And the first day of school is the twenty-third. So, um, I think that, seeing it that, then we were to do the week before teachers are back, it would be August tenth or the seventeenth.
I actually think I misspoke. I do believe it's the week before students come back. I apologize.
Okay, the week before students come back, okay.
The week before students come back, I apologize.
Make sure I'm understanding. Okay, so the seventeenth then might be a date. So I imagine we need to make a motion on this, right? Um, to set it?
Yeah, I move we set the August meeting date to August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to set the August School Board meeting date to August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Any public comment to this motion? Seeing none, uh, board comment or any insights we're not thinking of?
Yeah, I, Leslie, do we usually end up having a, is this one we usually end up having to do with a board, uh, um, budget revision? Or is that more likely September? Okay. Yeah, okay. So it's not gonna affect that?
Wanna make sure everybody hears what's being discussed.
Yes, sorry. Um, new to the timeline of that, my understanding is that September first is there's step increases that teachers will be recei- are being eligible for. And so there'll be significant changes to the budget because those increases will impact the budget. And so then we'll, we'll probably at that time come back around, uh, at that later meeting or, and then ask to change.
But we don't have to do that with the, with the freshly negotiated contracts now that we don't have to revise the budget until then?
Well, we will be going through and putting that, uh, in, and start putting that in place so they have that. And then, um, you know, we'll be, we'll be going through and there could be, we'll have the September budget revisions. We might have some budget revisions beforehand as well to try to address that. Now, I'll actually have to look and see if that's something that we wanna put in place prior to with the, uh, new contract being ratified for both SIS and...
Yeah, the, the only reason I ask is 'cause I remember this happening before where we set a date and we're like, oh, no, we need to do this or that, and we didn't really realize it till...
Right. And it, and it very well could be, as is a, is a change in a contract, that, that could have been there with another budget revision to address that, uh, increase or change. Uh, and then there's probably a, a one again later, again, when there's significant financial changes and we have to...
This date works. There's no conflicts that we know of.
Not that I'm aware of there being any conflicts, no. Like I said, that has been the past practice. Last year it was on the eighteenth, so, or I should say this school year.
Okay. Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, the motion on the table is that the August School Board meeting for August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Any board members opposed to that motion? Seeing none, motion passes. Item twelve H, uh, is the School Board meeting dates for the twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, school year. Have a motion, please.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three School Board calendar as presented.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the School Board meeting dates, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three as presented. Any public comment to the motion? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Uh, we do need to set a November date on this, correct?
Yeah, it's just, it's, um, recognizing that because of the November second through fourth AASB Annual Conference, we usually move that, uh, Wednesday's board meeting up to the Monday before. So you'll see that, um, there's two board meetings actually in October. There's the, um, October fifth, well, there's three with the, um, uh, Board Retreat. But, um, the October thirty-first is actually on a Monday and that would normally be that in November. So I just wanna make sure that, draw attention to that as well.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I, if I'd thought about that for longer than two seconds, I would've seen that. Okay, so, yeah, just a note for everybody, October thirty-first would be our November, be a costume party. Okay, thanks for that courtesy laugh, Paul. Uh, so we've got September seventh, October fifth, uh, and then the School Board Retreat. As Timmy always brags, she can set her calendar too, will be October seventh and eighth. And then the November meeting, October thirty-first. Then the AASB Conference in Anchorage, November second through fourth, December seventh, January fourth, February one, March one, April five, May three, and then June twenty-first on this calendar.
So, um, that Monday, October thirty-first, um, not to dwell on it, that would be during the day, correct? Or what ti- is there a set time for that?
I mean, that's something to consider.
That is, uh, that's right, that is, uh, Halloween.
It's, while it's not important to me, but it's very important to my children. Um, wait every year for this day, so...
Yeah.
Um, you know, it would be good to set an actual time. I don't wanna go down the rabbit hole, but I never, I have conflicts with family, family stuff.
Or is there, but not, I mean, we could amend it to move it to November first? Is there any reason we can't do that? It'd be a Tuesday night, but...
The only conflict that might come with that is if we need to fly in, if the conference starts on the second, we might have to fly in on the night of the first to be there for the start of the conference on the second. So that could be a conflict with, um, getting to Anchorage, have it on the first. We could look at, um, you know, instead of a six o'clock start time, we could look at an earlier start time, a four o'clock start time if that would work, um, or we could look at another date as well in November.
Is there anything, uh, against policy than moving it to like the following week, November ninth? Option, I think, if someone wants to...
That would be...
We were just looking at the conference. It looks like the conference is actually November third, so maybe we're taking into consideration travel time for the second through, um...
Oh, okay.
So November first might actually work. It looks like it will work.
The, usually the conference, even then, and Thursday is normally just the committee meetings. So the conference doesn't really start until Monday unless you're flying in for the committee meetings. I mean, Friday.
Friday, right. Did we do commi- I can't even remember. You did, that's right. Good man. Um, okay, so...
I, I move to amend the, um, the Sika School Board, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Board meeting dates to... I- I move to amend the, um, the SIC school board, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three board meeting dates to, um, reflect, um, November first, um, in regards to the October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Drop those out.
Sorry. It has been moved and seconded to move the October thirty-first date to November first. Any public comment? Any board discussion further for that amendment? Um, are any board members opposed to the motion, the amendment of moving the October thirty-first meeting to November first? Seeing none, uh, we'll mark that change on the proposed meeting calendar. So that gets, uh, gets that meeting off of Halloween.
So, uh, another point of order, the election is October five. Well, that's what it said on the ordinance that we just looked at. Ballot position, proposition, October fif- oh, that was twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I apologize.
I think the election would be the fourth. Then, yeah, you're swearing new members in the very next day.
Well, we can't until they're certified.
Well, that's right. They have to certify. Okay, so it's- it was not till the, uh.
That's- that's- that was the point that I was gonna bring up, is that I don't see a date to.
Everyone's asking all these good questions.
I don't see the date to, normally we have the election and then like, what is it, the Fri- is it on Friday, they- does anybody remember? It's like the following, I think it's on Friday.
I can look at my meeting notes.
They certify it?
She- they certify it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Do they have to count the, because they don't count the, uh, absentee and mail-in ballots until after the election closes on Tuesday.
This year we had that special, um, meeting, uh, on the fifteenth, I believe, of October. So if we were to have, uh, a swearing in, uh, we can look at that second potentially week in October on the twelfth.
Well, it's, but then the issue that comes up is that then the new members.
Can't actually attend the retreat, yeah.
Wouldn't get to the retreat.
How did we do that? Because, uh, according to my meeting notes, we had, we had a meeting on October fifteenth and October sixth of last year. So the sixth would have been the regular school board meeting. But then, yeah, I think that, um.
Then the fifteenth was the swearing in and we did the, we did the retreat later in the month. I don't think we've ever done the retreat that early.
Okay, so those are, this calendar again, yes, for our regular meetings, so we could vote on that. And then, yeah, we just need to be in touch with, uh, Timmy for setting that, uh, retreat date. Um, so the school board retreat date could change. Do we wanna, I guess, so we're approving the retreat date in this motion, do we want to strike that from this calendar so we don't have to revisit it? Uh, her availability, yeah. But- but so the point that's been brought up is just that, um, there, I mean, there's gonna be three seats open for this election. And we want to make sure that when we do that retreat, that our new members are included in that, um, included in the, uh, retreat. So, uh, if it's part of this approved calendar, then we need to revisit it and change that date, which you could do, or we can just remove it and then just state when the retreat is at a different date.
Yeah, we did it the twenty-ninth last fall.
Twenty-ninth of October?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to strike the school board retreat, October seventh and eighth, twenty twenty-two, from the twenty-two, twenty-three school board calendar meeting date. Any public comment? Board discussion? Um, I don't know that the, I don't know that it would need to be put back. The board would just need to schedule that retreat and you all just need to know when it is and you need to make sure that it gets in the paper that we're having that retreat within a few days before that. Um, I- I suppose if you want to be official, once it is, once that retreat is scheduled, you could bring the calendar back up to the board and approve it with the changes made. But I don't know that, I would, I guess I'd want to look at past school board calendars and see if we've, uh, if that retreat has even, has been included on this, um, pass.
Yeah, sometimes we don't operate.
Okay, so.
It's like a budget.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, here's our meeting dates from last year. Now, the school board retreat's on it, so we just need to. Now, we have this motion on the table. We could amend to, uh, change the dates. So October twenty-ninth and thirtieth is what it was for twenty-one. So I would say, and we normally, it's normally on a Friday, Saturday, right? So it would, it would need to be the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. Uh, I move to amend the motion of striking the school board retreat dates from the calendar. Do you change? Oh, yeah, you're right. You can, we can't. Okay, sorry. I should know this by now. Okay, so, uh. I'm going for a B. Um, so I would say, yeah, okay, so we, we need to, uh, so you either need to withdraw the motion or we need to vote on it and, right? Okay, so let's vote on striking the board retreat from the calendar. Any school board members opposed to striking the school board retreat from the calendar? Aye. So we're, we're, we're objecting to removing it. Okay, sorry. Um, I feel like I've wove quite a web here. Um, Robert's rules. So, uh, let's, let me just do that again just to be official. So we're going to vote to strike the school board, and I always say is anyone opposed because everything passes. So let's say, who is in favor, are any board members in favor of striking the school board retreat from the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school board calendar? No one in favor, the motion fails. Back to the original motion. Um, I move to amend the dates of the school board retreat on the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar to October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. Has been ammu- amended and, or moved and seconded to amend the school board retreat dates to October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. Any public comment? Any board comment? No, we've got a couple of things here, which is great. Okay, so, uh, we'll go ahead and vote on that amendment. So the amendment is to change the dates of the school board retreat to October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, which is a Friday and Saturday, twenty twenty-two. Are any school board members opposed changing those dates? Seeing none, the amendment passes. So, now, back to our original calendar with new dates. Do we need to review what dates we've changed? Donna, you following us? Sorry, I'm throwing you quite a few curveballs here.
November one and then October twenty-eight, twenty-nine, right?
Yep. Yeah, so the Halloween meeting's been changed to November first and the retreat dates have been changed to October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
So I only see two other things that might be a possible concern.
(laugh)
But I guess it's good to hash them out now.
Yeah, let's hash it out now.
Uh, one, January fourth is square in the middle of winter break, is it not? Are we back?
Yeah, we should back, uh, the second is a holiday and the third is the start with in-service days and the fourth is the Wednesday, um, which is school, I mean, students aren't back, but, you know, we're back, teachers are back.
Oh, perfect. Uh, and then the other one that I was looking at was May three, twenty twenty-three. That one's always the one that gets squirrely because we're trying to finish up that budget. To get to the city before May one. And I was wondering if we wanted to think about moving that back or if we just do a special budget meeting. Guess it's hard to say from here, so far out.
You know, we could, I mean, you know, we could always have the special decision to the la- or special meeting to have, you know, to approve it, the budget, before that May first deadline, um, and then come back for the board meeting. I also, while you were having the conversation, I texted Timmy just to see if she might be able to work us in on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. As we're talking calendar.
Great.
That is right before the conference and of course, that's a very difficult time for them because they're putting together the AASB conference.
Oh, yeah.
And we're just coming at that next week. And so she, um, right now said the fourteenth or fifteenth or the twenty-first or twenty-second would work better for her, um, if you guys can, if we can make it happen.
(laugh) After all that pain.
Yes, sorry.
So, no, no, we can, I mean, this is.
Okay, I move we amend the calendar, twenty-two, twenty-three board calendar, (cough) moving the school board retreat from October twenty-eight, twenty-nine to October, what was it?
Either the fourteenth, oh, twenty-first or twen- twenty-first and twenty-second.
Twenty-first and twenty-second.
Second. Been moved and seconded to amend the dates for the school board retreat, October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, to October twenty-first and twenty-second. Any public comment? Any further board comment? Um, I guess my only comment is just looking at our calendar from last year. It seems like we had the retreat the week before, but whatever. I'm glad you talked to her right now. (laugh) So we'll go with what her suggestion is if we approve it. Um, okay, so the, uh, amendment on the table is to change the school board retreat dates from the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth to the twenty-first and twenty-second. Are any board members opposed? Seeing none, the amendment carries. So the retreat dates are now the twenty-first and twenty-second. October, sorry. Thanks. All right, so your concerns were the beginning of May and beginning of January. We're both good on, or we're all good on that. Okay, any other prizes hiding here that we want to talk about right now? Okay, so the original motion was to approve the board calendar, twenty-two and twenty-three. We'll say, uh, motion is to approve the board calendar as amended. Are any board members opposed to the motion? Seeing none, uh, the calendar is approved as amended. Oof. Feel more difficult than it sho- than it should have been. (laugh) But, uh. Yeah, you're right. I would have been catching surprises, little, uh, landmines. Okay, we do have some board policies to finish out our meeting with, uh, moving on to item twelve I. Approval of BP three four four zero inventories on first reading. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the update to BP three four four zero inventories in first reading as presented. Any public comment to this policy? Bringing it back to the board, um, our description, the update corrects the dollar value of items, that the superintendent must maintain an inventory of from a value of over five hundred dollars to a value of over five thousand dollars. This update also adds reference to BP three four four zero point one fixed assets capitalization. This is one that we caught at last meeting and pulled it so we could make those changes and now here we are again. Are there any questions or clarifications from the board that you want to bring to the table?
I'm glad that we caught that.
Yeah.
Frank did.
Yeah, I think it was Frank caught it, so.
Good to have Frank.
All right, um, let's go ahead and vote. Do we need to roll call on this? It's just about inventories more. It's not about spending money, but it is about money. I get confused. Okay, so, uh, the motion on the table is to approve the update to BP three four four zero inventories in first reading as presented. Are any board members opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Moving on to item twelve J, adoption of BP three four four zero point one fixed asset capitalization in first reading. Have a motion, please.
Move to adopt BP three four four zero point one fixed assets capitalizations in first reading.
I second.
Has been moved and seconded to adopt BP three four four zero point one fixed assets capitalization in first reading as presented. Any public comment to the motion? Okay, bringing it back to the board. Any questions, comments, concerns from the board on this? Looks good. All right, uh, the motion on the table is to adopt BP three four four zero point one fixed assets capitalization in first reading as presented. Are any board members opposed to the motion? Seeing none, motion passes. Item twelve K, approval of BP three five four zero transportation on first reading. Can I have a motion, please?
I second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve BP three five four zero transportation in first reading as presented. Any public comment? Bringing it back to the board. This update clarifies that there must be adequate space on a bus schedule so that transportation to charter schools does not interfere with transportation to attendance area schools. It also makes stylistic changes. You have the attachment, board members? And I think, did we discuss this one in the policy committee, that we don't have charter schools, but we thought it was good to, in case someday we do?
No, actually, we.
Or was I thinking of something else?
Yeah, we don't have charter schools for transportation and so, um, uh, the, uh, decision was made, we did not need to have that language in there.
Okay.
So we were just updating, uh, some of the language under transportation and then, uh, the need for the charter schools was not, um, was not deemed necessary.
Was not included. It's all struck, yep. Great. Thanks for getting me back on track. Okay, any questions or comments from the board? All right, the motion on the table is to approve BP three five four zero transportation in first reading as presented. Are any board members opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes. Item twel- twelve L, approval of BP three five four one point one school-related trips on first reading. Have a motion, please.
I move to approve BP three five four one, that one, school-related trips first reading as presented.
It has been moved and seconded to approve BP three five four one point one school-related trips on first reading as presented. Any public comment? Bringing it back to the board. Description states this update raises the recommended amount of private insurance persons transporting students to one million dollars. It also revises the school-related trip section to ensure that trips in school vans are covered by policy. Any questions, clarifications from the board? Seeing none, go ahead and vote. Motion is to approve BP three five four one point one school-related trips on first reading as presented. Are any board members opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. A few more to go. Item twelve M, approval of BP three five four one. five, four one point five, alternative transportation arrangements on first reading. Motion, please?
I move to approve BP three, four, one point five, alternate transportation arrangements in first reading.
Did I say those numbers right? Make that motion one more time.
I move to approve BP three, five, four one point five, alternate transportation arrangements in first reading as presented.
I think you're the same thing, so.
All right, yeah, I'm not trying to be.
(laugh)
Say you don't wanna second that?
(laugh)
It's been moved and seconded to approve BP three, five, four one point five, alternative transportation arrangements in first reading as presented. Gonna be official. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Description states this update removes the monetary requirement for districts that wish to adopt in lieu of transportation arrangements with parents. Any questions about that or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none. The motion is to approve BP three, five, four one point five, alternative transportation arrangements in first reading as presented. Are any board members opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes. Item twelve N, approval of BP three, five, five zero, food service on first reading. Have a motion, please?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve BP three, five, five zero, food service, first reading as presented. Any public comment? Bring it back to the board. Description states this update includes language to recognize various dietary guidelines that may apply to different districts. Also updated nutrition terminology. Only it updates language authorizing the use of independent contractors to perform food services. Questions, clarifications from the board? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion to approve BP three, five, five zero, food service on first reading as presented. Any board members opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. And item twelve O, approval of BP three, five, five four, other food sales on first reading. Can I have a motion, please? So BP three, five, five four, food, other food services in first reading as presented. It's been moved and seconded to approve BP three, five, five four, other food sales, first reading as presented. Any public comment? Any board comment on this final policy to approve? Okay, seeing none. Motion is to approve BP three, five, five four, other food sales in first reading as presented. Any board members opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes. And that brings us to the end of new business. Item thirteen, correspondence and information, we do not have any on tonight's, uh, packet. So, reminder of future, or do we?
We do.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just, I just jumped right on through. Oh, yeah, there is a, a letter to the board. We usually don't have anything here, so, um, so, yeah, we have this letter. Uh, is it just, when we have something like this, we just, it's just for us to read, do we need to read it at the table, or, um, it just goes under that part of the agenda?
It goes under part of the agenda, it is a, uh, letter from a parent that just, um, you know, wanted to, uh, recognize, um, you know, the school district and, uh, Blatche Middle School and some of the work that had been done by the staff, teachers, and, uh, administration there.
Yeah, okay, so I'm, I'm really sorry for just glossing over that. Um, it is, that's right, I read this, this is a very, this is a very nice letter, uh, from the Swain family, so, check it out, and, yeah, everyone for great work they do. Uh, item fourteen, future agenda items and upcoming events, so we stated earlier in the meeting, uh, when the back to school, first contract day and students returning, but back to school staff in service is August sixteenth, eight thirty AM sharp in the PAC, and then the first day of school, August twenty third, twenty twenty two. All right. Before we move to adjourn, thanks, everybody. This has been great with you all, I have learned a lot, and, uh, yeah, lots of conflicting emotions, so thanks for, uh, thanks for all you do, everybody at, uh, on this, on this team, this has been an honor. Um, so, we need a move to adjourn, right? Have a motion to adjourn, please? It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting. Any public comment? Any board comment?
Thank you, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Yeah, it's been a, it's been a ride, but.
Yeah.
Uh, thanks for everything.
Yes, yeah, man.
So, yeah.
And you get to take your flak home.
(laugh) Oh, yeah, that's right, I do. Um.
Where's Mike Berry? He has to make, he has to make a buck if he's coming up.
Okay, uh, is anyone opposed to adjourning? Seeing none, the meeting is adjourned at eight twenty four PM.
Yay, Andrew.